Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
You have a motion by Commissioner Friend, and a second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Items for discussion, the first one or the only one is the left county school systems appropriation request. Brian, you going to lead this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, last week, just to give you background on this, last week I had, was asked to meet with the superintendent schools about an issue they had with some HVAC compressors. At that meeting, the superintendent, Chairman Williams, and Mr. Hudson, their facilities person, met and we talked about it. They have, and of course they're here so they can answer any of those questions that I may miss on this, but in general, they're requesting an additional $122,200 in capital expense to fund the repair of three HVAC compressors that they have. In the schools, as I understand it, their HVAC systems are made up of three compressors that work in series, so as the load on that system comes up, those compressors come on to handle that load. Two of the three compressor systems at Southside High School have lost a compressor, so they're down to only two. And when one of those failed, it lost its refrigerant, which has essentially jacked the price up on that because you've got to replace the compressor and refill the system. So that one is $50,000. The second compressor was $40,200, and then the compressor at Northeast Elementary is $35,000. The issue they've run into is that without that third compressor, the HVAC systems can't keep up, which is causing humidity issues, humidity control issues, as well as a loss of cooling capacity. The reason you have, the reason they asked for the board to meet quickly on this is that they have a two-week lead time on getting those compressors in, so it's going to take them at least two weeks to get them in, and they've got to put them in place. Teachers start back on August the 21st, students start on the 28th, so they're under a time compression on that. Based on a couple of questions from the board, I reached out to Dr. Phils to ask him about where they stood on their existing fund balances. He said that they had approximately $87,000 in their capital fund balance now, and he really wasn't able to project for us where they thought that might end up because that is, that cap, that fund balance is made up for capital. So the only reason that you would have money left over in that typically is if you either had a project come in under budget, or you deferred a project. So they don't anticipate there being much money left in that capital line item. In regards to their current expense line item, fund balance, he says that after reducing that current amount by $500,000 to $700,000, which is where they need to be to make up for the funding for the budget, based on what the state has done this year. And according to Dr. Phils, they're still really not sure where that is because the numbers in the budget from the state are still kind of up and down, they're still trying to figure those out. I think they're waiting for DPI on some, on some, some information about exactly how that, how those numbers are going to work out. But he says, he said that if they took out, made about $500,000 to $700,000, that would leave them somewhere around about a million dollars in their current expense fund balance, plus or minus. And of course, they, their desire would be to, he mentioned their desire would be to protect that fund balance because they want to be able to use that to, to deal with the ups and downs that they're seeing in the state budget along those lines. So essentially, in looking at this, you as a board have about four options to look at. And that's lined out in your, in your agenda item. First of all, you can approve to appropriate an additional fund balance to them of $122,200. We would transfer those funds through the school system as capital. That would require an additional $122,200 in additional county fund balance to be appropriated. And you have a budget amendment attached to this agenda that would do that if that's the route you chose. The second, the second option is that you could choose to cut $122,200 from your existing 17, 18 county general fund budget and redirect those funds to the school system for capital. And that wouldn't require any additional county funding, fund balance to be appropriated. The third thing you could do is you can instruct the board of commissioners, I mean, the, the school board to defer existing fiscal year 17, 18 capital projects in the amount of $122,200, or whatever that amount would need to be once they figured out, you know, what the, if there was any fund balance available in capital to do that, and that would not require additional appropriation from you. And the fourth, the fourth option would be to, to give the, the board of education an option to submit an amendment, which is under GS 115C 433D, to move $122,200, or whatever that amount needed to be again, from their current expense fund balance to the, to the capital expense account. Under that statute, they have to ask permit, your permission to do that, they would submit that to you. You have 30 days to act on it. If you approve it, it's done. If you don't act within that 30 days, it's still approved, and that wouldn't require any additional funding from you. So it is purely a policy decision from you about how you want to do that. School board members are here, well, represented from the school system, we have the chairman here as well, to answer any questions you may have regarding that, their concern about their existing fund balances and trying to protect those, and where you ultimately line up on this. So I'll turn that over to y'all, and, or to the school members, the school system members to answer any questions you may have.
Captain, you want us to explain how the costs come up for Stan here for me?
Happy to.
Sure. First off, appreciate your time, and I think, well, you know me, but if not, I am Terry. We have, I think y'all know Stan, that's the manager's director. The cost on three compressors, you want to just explain that first, how, because there were some questions, I understand, is whether, you know, we bid that out, or how exactly came about?
Our bid process, we use U.S. Communities, which is a pre-negotiated state contract bid for school systems, hospitals, and government entities to, a direct purchase to help expedite the process, so we don't have to go through the RFP process, which draws out for months sometimes to get us a bid in it. But it's already been pre-negotiated by the state of North Carolina, all bides are current, and we just work directly with the vendor, chosen vendor, vendor on the chosen products. And it just happens to fall under the compressors, fall under Brady Services, which they are the only vendor for train services commercially in North Carolina. So we're kind of limited to one, and kind of got us there, but that's where, that's where we're at, where that goes. They hit, and all three fell at one time, they fell over a few days there at the end. It was our heaviest load at the end of the school season. Everything was going to the top of its capacities, and they basically dropped out at the end, one at a time. Two of them went out the same day, Northeast and Southside went out the exact same day. We had Brady Services come in to go behind my guys and make sure that that was the problem, and they came up with the same decisions that it had to be replaced.
Okay. And just, and just to put it in perspective, because I was also some questions about three units failing at one time, and I'm not saying that's not unusual, but I'm also saying that you realize that with the, and I have a listing here, about four sheet listing, but I'm standing, in the school system, we have a total of what I would consider large compressors, rooftop pipe compressors and things like that. We have 162 of those in our system, and then the smaller split unit, mini units, we have another 170 of those. So we have 330-plus compressors in our system. So while we certainly don't expect three to fail at a time, we'd almost could say that it's not totally unusual, considering some, whether some of the age of these, but we hope we certainly don't have that fail in the future. But understanding three out of 330 is not, you know, is not a lot, although it's expensive. I understand that. Brian, he, you laid it out, you know, the options quite well, but what we would like to look at is the two options. One, if you wish to allocate the funds, obviously that would be the first choice for us. And the second, if not, the way that capital was laid out to us this year and approved, it was done on, I'm going to call it on pretty much line-by-line item, and I have it here because we were asked to give you our capital based on items that were, have ten-year lives or more because of the way that you guys were choosing to fund it, and that was y'all's decision. So we have a specific number of items here that we are supposed to work with. So it really doesn't give us any leeway to play within our own system. And quite honestly, that's kind of what puts us here today.
Absolutely.
Either we need the money, a new allocation, or we have to have your permission to reassign some of these funds. I do want to speak to something, don't talk too much, but I want to speak to something real quick. The money was broken down into borrowed funds, which was 659,000, and then there was 455,000, what you would call a cash payment, I believe. But in that 455,000, 350,000 of that was assigned to our technology department, which actually requested 400, 350 is a minimum, actually is, is below probably minimum what we need in technology from year to year. So once you take that out of the cash payment, there's no funds left there to work on. We have about 105,000 of, counting here, of about eight projects that we're going to try to complete. So that's why, if you put all of that together, that's why we're here. There's, there's no leeway for us to work within our own system, the way it was approved by the commission of board, and sort of that decision to do that. Yeah, and when they, when they talk about fund balance, Brian, the 87,000, that, those are moving targets.
True.
Those are moving targets all the time. We have, we actually had a larger fund balance earlier, and we have cooling towers standing can speed that, how much was that standing?
Like 115,000 that we took from that fund, the cooling towers at Washington High School.
Right. You may remember a few, a couple of years ago, we put new units in that school, but we didn't replace the cooling towers. Were to get the efficiency out, we needed to do that, so we revisited that when we had the money, and we chose not to come to you because there was enough money in the fund balance, but that's what dropped our fund balance down. We paid for the cooling towers out of pre, of money that you had already approved in upwards. No need to come ask you for it, you'd already approved it. So the 87,000 is there, but I do want to say this last thing. When we came to what our capital needs, we asked for a budget of 2,460,000, which we received 1,115,000. So there's still a million dollars almost of projects out there, about 900,000 of the projects that we shifted to next year, and we're using that 87,000 to go against that. Actually, the 87,000, as I said, is a moving target because of this. When you take the 455, the cash payments that you guys are giving to us, the actual list here is 479,800. So that's 23,805 that we are appropriating out of fund balance, so that changes that figure even more. So you can't truly sit here and say there's exactly 87,000 because tomorrow that'll be a different figure the next day because we applied to our own projects as it goes. So bottom line, either 122,000, we would like to see new appropriations or releases from this project, this, so that we can manage it. And what we'll end up having to do, Stan, you've given us maybe a couple of projects we could move.
Yes, like the chocolate window tee roof, chocolate window tee primary school roof, defer if, and there was one other one to defer to come up with, and then maybe we could do one of our other smaller projects to take care of the rest of those ones.
So that's what we'll have to do. If we don't get additional funds, we'll have to move some projects over. And just since you chose that one, I have to say, that's the same project that we've already moved.
Deferred one year before.
Before. Now we're just moving another year. So just be aware that there will be a day of reckoning of replacing these roofs that we keep moving from year to year to year. But that's y'all's call, but that's what puts us here. We don't have any leeway in this budget as it's currently set up. And I'll say, Stan, can you answer any question you've asked?
Questions or comments?
Comment. I'm not for any high-end new appropriation, but I don't have a problem with freeing them up to find the money to do it with, but as far as the new appropriation, my answer is no.
Steve?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You go first.
Come on, go.
Okay. The fourth option here, did you look at that one?
Which was the fourth option he laid out, transferring money from current expense?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, but typically that would be our fourth option for us, the last option, because anytime we get into local current expense funds, those are the dollars that you are well aware of that pays people. And that's a big moving target because, and I wrote this down just so I can make sure I've quoted it exactly correct, I like facts, I like exact numbers, I don't like to just throw stuff out there. On local expense, you may recall, we actually had a request of 15,747,000, because at the time, we had over $500,000 in unfounded mandates sent down to us from the state, and that was the teacher reduction, I mean, the teach, class size reduction plan, salary increase for local, which came out at about 3.3%, is what I'm listing at now, and a health and insurance increase. So we had $500,000 right out of the gate, and I believe Brian spoke to that earlier instead, when Dr. Phils said that he would take that out of that fund balance, which would put us under around a million dollars, I believe he said. But if you look at the requested budget that we currently have, we asked for 15,372,000 of the 15,747 budget. We asked for the county, 15,372, and we received 14,587. So that's a difference of 785,000. So when you look at that difference in our budget that we're working with, because remember, we have a budget that we work within, and we have a county appropriation that you give to us, and those are two different numbers. Just what you give to us is not actually our budget. We still have to work our own budget within, with fines and forfeitures, or wherever we come up with funds at. So 785,000 is the difference that we were looking at, and out of a million-dollar fund balance, so when I say that's a moving target, that's a big moving target. The million dollars, that's, that's not money that's going to sit there in the, in the fund balance. That's money that's going to be used as this year goes through, dealing with these different issues that we have. And as I said, it directly affects peoples, people and the classrooms. So we prefer not to move any money out of that because that would really put us in a bind if, if we don't get, because we're still working with the state, we still don't know exactly what it is we have from the state. So we're on a real thin line with local expense.
Right here you're saying, it's either, either we come up, figure out some way to give you additional fund of 122,000, or we're going to have to postpone something that needs to be done this year, next year, and we have a number of projects next year that we may have to fulfill, plus we don't know what's going to happen with the classroom size.
Well, we, we actually, we do know what's going to happen with classroom size. That's a deal that's already been decided by the state. Classrooms in K through third grade will change from 16 to 18, that's a decision they've already made. Now, you may be referring to, you would be absolutely accurate, state, we don't know exactly how that will affect us, and I'm looking over at my assistant superintendent human resources in people, that red mark, because at the end of the school year, we always have numbers of retirees and people that resign, and so that affects how we actually staff our schools. But we do know there will be more teachers needed next year than this year because the class sizes are going down, the senate and legislature in Raleigh's already made that decision. That's, that's, that's a given, that's going to happen.
Is it possible we have to also increase number of classrooms?
Anything at this time is possible. I can't really speak toward that exactly because you have to figure out what our enrollment will be at the time, and we don't know exactly what our ADM, what we call our ADM enrollment will be, but, I mean, anything's on the table.
Or possibly redistricting and increased busing costs.
Anything's on the table.
So it's not something we can, we should kick down the road?
When you deal with schools, one thing I have found out in six years I've been here, everything is always a moving target.
Yeah, and the state's good, given us some funded mandates.
Well, so far, every year in those six years, I think I've had those to deal with.
But that's, that's.
Keep personnel costs down.
We continue, we continue to work with it. I mean, it's, that's just the way, that's the way the system works.
In, in the current expense budget of 14,587,000, is there any money in there, or was there any money in there for maintenance and repairs, any heat and air?
No. There is a maintenance budget in there, but the maintenance budget that resides within current local expense is used to fund Stan's maintenance department, and by funding it, I mean paying for his people, paying for the people that, how many people in that just? Eighteen, eighteen people that are within the maintenance, not anything that replaces equipment or anything like that comes out of capital, it's a capital issue.
So every time we've got to replace a compressor out of the 330, you've got to list that in the capital budget?
330.
You've got 330 compressors.
Oh, compressors, oh, yes, sir. General small ones, we do take out the general operation budget, two repairs that are coming back to capital every time, these larger ones, they're sitting in the $3,000, $4,000 range. Of course, we have to because it drastically hits our operation budget by doing that, and...
Yeah, the maintenance budget he's dealing with, as I said, is funding his people, but yes, if there's an issue that comes up, and we've had a couple, whatever be, $2,000 or $3,000 that we can take out of his funds, because it's kind of a, that's kind of a thing that we go between here, there's a, if there's $2,000 or $3,000 there, we can do that without having, we, we're not going to come before you for $2,000 or $3,000 every time it's needed, but an item like 100,000, we can't take that out of his budget for his staff.
Well, when you look at the projected fund balance of a million dollars, if you take 5%, which is what the UNC School of Government says, that we should be looking at 5% of your current expense, that number is 729,000. So if that number, and I understand it's a moving target, I don't disagree with you on that, but the fact that it's a projected number, and we're in the first month of our budget, it concerns me that we jump in and increase it by 122,000, because, you know, our allocation ends up building your fund balance. Your fund balance is not created by the federal, the state, it's created by county funding. I mean, I, I just think it's very early in the process, and that, you know, as you firm up your budget and your state funding, if you realize that you need to come back and have additional funding, that would be my recommendation, allowing you to move the money that you need right now in current expense. I mean, I think, I think that we're all in favor of supporting and making sure that you have the money to do these, you know, these unexpected things. But it just concerns me the fact that this is our first month, and based on your projected fund balance, it appears to me that you can handle it and then come back six months from now, if you see that that fund balance is going to drop, you know, below 750,000.
Right. Well, I mean, whatever decision y'all make is what we'll deal with, but considering, as I just said, we're already dealing with about 785,000 difference between what we allocate from the county and what we use in our regular, that's where that fund balance will be, will be put towards, that's what I'm saying, that fund balance might be sitting there today, but the bills haven't been paid out of it yet, is what I'm saying. But we will do whatever you do. I can assure you, we will fall below the 5% limit, that will absolutely happen without a doubt, but we'll, we'll do whatever you want. We still prefer to deal with capital in capital and not local expense.
I do too.
Because we just like to keep it separate because we're dealing in equipment versus people. And at times, I can find out how to deal with a piece of equipment a little more sensitive than dealing with a person, but that's just the way the schools like to operate, is to complete budgets, different budgets, and I understand what you're saying, we'll do whatever y'all decide, because you're right about that, we don't make money ourselves, our money comes through this county, and we know that.
Commissioner Brian?
I mean, I heard it very well, I heard it very well when, when you started with this presentation. He said, if we didn't tell them how to spend their money, then we wouldn't be here. So I'm saying, let's free them up, let them spend their money, like, I mean, we, we give them the money to, for help keep our schools and stuff like that, but we shouldn't be able to tell them how to spend it. Now, case in fact, we allocated for two buses, that's what we earmarked money for, for two buses, if we have given them the money, and let them determine whether they need two buses or not, but we determine for them, and I think it's wrong. I mean, I agree with him wholeheartedly. If you, if you're going to fund something, fund it. I mean, but the thing about it is, you just can't give me, give me money to buy lunch with, and don't let me have a snack. And that is, I, I, my preference would be, is let them move their money, some of those projects down the road. You have to do them eventually anyway.
Any other?
This don't have anything to do with money, but once we, once we make a decision how to do this, how long is it going to take to get those compressors repaired?
Stan, I'll let Stan call and talk, but I'm pretty sure he'll make a call and take a two-week lead time, and then how long did it start?
Two to three days. We have a schedule, we have two different units coming in to put them in, but I'd say within three weeks, we can have them operational.
Both systems up and going. And as Brian mentioned, what was important in what he was saying about the time scheduling, right now, when you've got a three compressor unit and two running one down, you can maintain what's going on out there right now, because we have schools that are empty. But when we put 1,000 students back, or 800 students, or 500, whichever school you're depending on, then third compressor is a necessary item, you have to have. So that's, that's why we're trying to beat the time limit and get it back, back before schools open up.
And if I may note, like, Southside, something I'm taking from the general operation budget, we pulled $3,330 to bring the humidifiers in the Southside to keep the humidity below 60-some percent, because at 70%, we start having issues. So we, we only chose last Friday, last Thursday afternoon to bring those in, and currently yesterday afternoon, we were at like 69% humidity at Southside, so...
And we spent another, we're not exactly telling you yet, but it was less than 20,000? Northside?
Yes.
We had the same issue at Northside, but we're not here presenting that to you, because when you have 87,000 in fund balance, we're able to pull, I believe that figure was 19,000. We were able to, we were able to go take a $19,000 issue that we had going on and handle it ourselves without coming back to you. Because we don't, I mean, we don't want to be in here before you, every few days, every few weeks, asking for 5,000 here and there. So that's why it's important, Brian, that we maintain some amount of fund balance, because I mean, the Northside issue that we just dealt with was an emergency issue, and if we hadn't had some money on hand to pull 19,000 to go to fix that problem, well, we'd have a lot of, a lot more compound issues on top of what we already had.
Correct.
So you can't operate a system this size with zero money available, it just, you just can't do it. Can't do it. No different than when I get my Duke Energy bill every month from, from Duke, I, I need to have enough money to cover my checking account, or somebody, probably my wife's not going to be happy. It has to be money there to operate them. You have to have some operating money on hand.
Any...
Two concerns I have is climate change, or whatever, we got a lot of hot weather in. Possibly if the weather stays as it is now, 100-plus degrees, will you have to send kids home?
No, if we, no, currently, if we can get these units, we'll be fine, but we...
I'm just saying, if you don't get the units, because if you don't order them now, you're not going to have them by the beginning of school.
Yes, that is a distinction.
I mean, I think it's crazy to have mess-up days when you've got ice and snow, and then we...
Right.
Now, that's one of my concerns. The second concern is, is we're falling down the same path that the county's fallen into year after year. Let's kick that can down the street. If we need a roof, and you postponed it last year, now we're going to postpone it another year, what is that roof actually going to cost them when it really goes in interior damage?
More than it would have cost last year to do it, but we deal within the confines of what you guys allow us to do. I mean, you have to make the hard decisions, we understand that.
But, and by the same token, is, is again, that roof leaking with the hot weather, air conditioning not producing, we get mold in there, so...
It's currently not leaking. It's not leaking, we're definitely going to maintain it, but it's a, you know, it's not an everyday repair, but it's a every month repair here, different things, as the sun affects the roof shrinking and contraction, and different things go on that affects the roof drastically, so...
And, and I promise to make, to keep this short, but there are a couple things that I do want to say right quick, especially since I have Stan standing there with me. Because, you know, I, I, we feel a number of questions from people across the county and different news outlets and different people, and there's the feeling that we do not have in place a preventive maintenance program, and that is entirely not true. We do, on these units, they're a fail.
Very extensive maintenance program.
Stan has all the records, he can show exactly when all these units have their regular maintenance. We, we do that, we keep up these, but you know, when you have as many things going on in the county as we have, you still going to have problems. I have problems at home, and I have my units checked every year, but things happen. So there is a preventive maintenance in, in place. We do have a long-term facilities plan, we have a five-year plan, and you commissioners would know that, because each year when we present to you our list of items, we present to you a current year and a two-to-five-year list of items. The roofing issues are, we had an outside company come in a few years ago and do an inventory and check on all of our roofs, and give us a listing of when they would need to be replaced, or expected to replace them. So when we come to you, as, as we did this year, and CPS was one, CPS is Chocolate Primary School, was a roof that needed to be replaced, that wasn't something that Stan just pulled out of thin air, it was on a list that we have had people go out and walk the roofs and evaluate them, and we're working down that list in the priorities that were given to us. So there is a system to the madness, is what I just want you to know. We don't just haphazardly do these things. Preventive maintenance is in place, roofing priorities is in place, these are things that are being taken care of, but we have over $250 million in county assets in schools, things are going to happen, and that's, that's what we deal with.
Just one other question, I did a walk through, I think, and looking at the condition of some of the buildings, but maybe I missed it, but I, I clearly thought somebody said that one of the compressors out of Washington High School was borderline, maybe I misunderstood.
We replaced those...
We replaced those two years ago.
Okay. Maybe that's what the company was.
And you asked, right, Commissioner, that was one that was a top priority that was taken care of. And that's when I spoke a little earlier about where the additional money in the fund balance went was to replace, I'm gonna call it step two.
Step two.
The cooling tower. We did have the funds to do it at the beginning, so we replaced what you're talking about. And then this just recently, I think they're working on it right now. And we took our, not our money, but money from you guys that we were able to to come up with and paid for the cooling towers to be replaced, and they're in the process of doing that right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Terry, what effect would it have on the capital projects if we just asked you to to go ahead and replace those compressors out of your capital money right now? And if and then in six months from now, you come back and we'll and we'll talk again about giving you more money?
Well, actually, that's, yeah, I mean, that that's what we're asking right now, is either if they're not gonna appropriate money, and I'd be honest with you, I knew that'd be a long shot. I mean, I live in this county too, I I know what's going on in this county. But the only other option is to free us from the list of items as they are because it doesn't give us any leeway right now to move the items around. So exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner Brent, if you just, if y'all will just release us from those items and let us decide the six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in what order we want to do it, we'll insert the compressors and we'll move something further down the road.
I'll make the motion.
I mean, that's the only other options we have.
But before you make the motion, can we do it so they can move money either out of current expense in the capital or to change one of the projects within the capital?
Well, for them to move out of current expense, they've gotta do a budget amendment, which would have to be approved by you.
Okay, that's a different issue.
That's a different, yeah, that's different.
I'll make the motion, give them the flexibility to spend the money and capital as they see fit.
Sure.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Booth and a second by Commissioner Brennan.